I know, it's a, what's it called?
Mr. Cusack will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Zimbo, can we have roll call?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Cusack.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Grofredo. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
All present except for Mr. Grofredo, and then Mr. Heckman is on the phone.
Have the motion approved the minutes from the April 20th meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congress seat at floor. Michael McGary. If, unless it was an accident, you were speaking earlier, you don't, if you want to address counsel, you don't, you don't have to. I thought it was a mistake.
We got you.
I didn't mean to scare you with the bass. Mr. Executive. Oh, is that what I have first? Sorry about that.
Well, that would be good, though.
Presentation by Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Ms. Becky Bartley, Barrett Bradley. I did not see that.
That's a lot of people at once.
Thank you. I'm Steve Glickman, the LVPC Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, for giving us some time to talk about our organizational report, which we are required to deliver to the Commonwealth March 1st. The year 2022 was another fast-paced year in which we delivered an unprecedented volume of analysis from our 30-year population and employment forecast to the Lehigh Valley's first-ever regional greenhouse gas assessment, to a $500,000 transportation improvement plan, all of with, with a focus to be a resource for our municipal partners. Along with that, we continue our guidance of development with the most land development and stormwater management plans filed in 15 years. The LVPC team will fill you in on the details, and I'm going to turn it over to LVPC Executive Director Becky Bradley.
Thank you. Thank you. One of our most anticipated recent reveals was our 30-year population and employment forecast. According to that forecast by LVPC data scientist and economist David Jan, the Lehigh Valley is expected to grow by 100,000 people and 74,000 jobs by 2050. That equates to a steady increase of more than 3,000 people per year, or nearly 10 per day, moving to our area. That's like adding another Bethlehem and another Easton to our region over the next 27 years. Overall, we project that North Hampton County will grow by 16%, or roughly 50,400 people. Completed every four years by the LVPC, these projections help municipalities, businesses, schools, plan every facet of their communities, whether it be for land use planning, determining how a business should evolve, or predicting how many students a school should plan for in two decades. And the projections are critical to our own transportation planning needs as these changes affect traffic patterns, congestion, and emissions. Next, Jill Sights, Senior Community Planner, will talk about the development.
Thanks, Becky. The LVPC does reviews in most every area of land use, environmental, and transportation planning. Our reviews are detailed and intricate, so they are a significant resource for our municipal partners, trying to manage development and grow smarter within their communities. These reviews are state-mandated services we provide to local governments by supporting grants, making developments better, improving safety, and protecting our environment. In 2022, the LVPC completed more than 1,200 reviews, which equates to completing more than four per day. Those included the most subdivision and land development reviews since 2008 and the most stormwater management reviews since 2006. In 2022, we did 566 reviews for communities in North Hampton County. This includes 251 subdivision and land development plans and 110 stormwater management plans. Because of our reviews and recommendations, the region now has more sidewalks, green infrastructure, bike racks, and truck parking to help make the region safer, more accessible, and more sustainable, essentially improving quality of life for everyone. Our handout is just the most recent response letter we received from a project engineer. This one is for the Sheets Project in Bethlehem, responding to and incorporating our recommendations, which included crosswalks and an improved bus stop. And we coordinate with Lanta and PennDOT directly on transportation-related recommendations. We also review municipal ordinances and comprehensive plans, and in 2022, 63% of those reviews were for North Hampton County communities, nearly 2/3 in the region. For North Hampton County, that is a 10% increase over 2021. More residential proposals continues the trend of the last five years, where developers are trying to increase supply and meet market demands. In 2022, we reviewed plans for more than 6,400 new homes, the equivalent of 123 every single week, and that's very close to the rate of development we were at before the housing boom began in the early 2000s. We reviewed the most apartments this century, and while single-family homes no longer dominate the Lehigh Valley building market, developers are still building them as we reviewed more than 1,000 proposed last year. We know that the cost and availability of housing is going to be a big issue going forward. That's why later this year, we are partnering with the Urban Land Institute and Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia to develop the first-ever housing and attainability strategy designed to increase housing at appropriate income levels and in locations that support the needs of everyone. We intend to look at the economics of housing development, zoning for housing diversity, and supply where it's needed most. Looking at just North Hampton County's housing proposals last year, there was great diversity across housing types. Townhouses have surpassed single-family detached, proposed by more than 100 units, and the number of apartment units was more than three times the number of single-family. There was also a substantial number of twins, assisted living units, and condominiums for a total of 3,670 units, accounting for 57% of all home proposals last year, and that was in North Hampton County. And that's a 32% increase over the previous year for the county. Over a quarter of the region's apartment proposals were located in the cities of Bethlehem or Easton last year. But suburban areas like Palmer and Forks Townships, and then even more rural communities like Allentownship, actually make up the bulk of proposed residential units. Market demand has also pushed beyond the municipalities located in the core area of the Lehigh Valley along Route 22. Penargel Borough, for example, had a 276-unit project proposed last year. These projects reflect a market response to the pressing need for additional housing in the region, and this is a sign that your communities are being proactive and evolving with the market. And next, Steve Neratko, Chief Planner, will present a picture of non-residential development in 2022.
I'm sorry, can I have your name again? You know, the gentleman.
Steve Neratko, N-E-R-A-T-K-O. Thank you, Joe. On the non-residential side, we reviewed more than 22 million square feet, enough to cover 382 football fields in 2022. That's the most square footage reviewed ever. 18 million square foot of that was for industrial, and of course, most of it, roughly 17.5 million, or enough to fill 3,723 NBA basketball courts, was for warehouse space. The majority was in North Hampton County, where the most recent CBRE report showed vacancy rates at just 5%. Despite a global trend of diminishing commercial needs, mostly due to the pandemic, the region proposed more than 1.7 million square feet of commercial space, or more than enough to fill the Lehigh Valley's tallest building, the PPL Building, seven times. That's the most this century, and half of that was for self-storage facilities, which put us right in the middle of a nationwide trend. The region proposed so much self-storage that if it continues, we could fill the Empire State Building in just two and a half years. In North Hampton County specifically, some of the commercial square footage was due to proposals for self-storage facilities, but much of it was due to several hotel proposals in Easton and Lower Nazareth. Many proposals in the retail category are small ground-floor spaces as part of mixed-use developments in the Bethlehem and Easton area. In the public, quasi-public category, nearly 3/4 were school-related proposals, including Lehigh University. We reviewed a couple of faith-based institutions and a proposal for the new San Zetti Fire Company in Lower Mount Bethel Township. You may notice the rather large number here. It's 11.4 million, and that's for industrial. 52% of that can be attributed to the RPL logistics development in Upper Mount Bethel. The plans measured three and a half feet thick. With 30 days to respond and even less to review, and remember, no response equals a deemed approval, we will review more than two inches of plans on this project per day. That was certainly a very quick sort of thumbnail view of the development statistics for 2022, but you can take a very detailed look at the numbers in the appendix in the back of our annual report. There you will find a record of every unit and square foot that was reviewed in 2022, including the type of development and the municipality where it was proposed. Now Becky's going to talk about how we're working with municipal partners to control growth.
Thank you, Steve. To help our communities better prepare for development, the LVPC is using multi-municipal planning as a powerful community-building tool to help municipalities find efficiencies, savings, and common priorities by working together, while keeping their autonomy and developing new strategies to take control of the development pressures they are facing. The LVPC wrapped up the Nazareth Area Multi-Municipal Comprehensive Plan last fall for 10 communities in the county. Now this group is working on the update of their zoning codes to align with the plan, and many are even working together with the same consultant. We're excited that Chapman Borough has recently completed a draft of their first-ever zoning ordinance and zoning map. They were the last community in the whole Lehigh Valley to not have zoning. So it's a big deal. And that came out of that planning effort. Other multi-municipal efforts include 10 communities in the Slate Belt they're meeting right now, and five River Central communities in the North Hampton Borough area, and we're currently working with 31 communities on multi-municipal plans that will help them control growth. 23 of the 31 are in North Hampton County. Patrick Ose, our Director of Transportation Planning and Data, is going to take a look at our freight and transportation initiatives, but I just wanted to note that he passed his American Institute Certified Planners exam yesterday, and has a very low pass rate, so we're proud of him.
Thank you, Becky. Much of this increase in development comes from our growing place in the global e-commerce economy. That's why, at the request of Executive McClure, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission developed a Freet-based land use management guide to assist municipality government in regulating the location and impact of Freet-based industrial development. The guide includes an online geographic information system mapping to, to, to assess the zoning and land use of all 38 North Hampton County local governments. Example of other planning tools, such as official map, ordinance, and transportation impact fees, that can also manage the impact of this form of development are included. The guide, the GIS mapping tool, and a training video are located on the North Hampton County website. Further of our effort to manage the impact of Freet, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission is also leading the Eastern Pennsylvania Freet Alliance, a multi-regional coalition created to write a new Freet infrastructure plan. It comprises of 10 counties and 400 municipalities. The Freet infrastructure plan will analyze transportation network and land use, among other factors, to develop a strategy to better manage Freet mobility in Eastern Pennsylvania. The plan is anticipated to complete in late 2023, 2024. To keep close tab on the traffic using the network, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission has long conducted traffic count at various roadway locations across the region. We have been charting the changes since the start of the pandemic. We have learned a lot from our continual traffic counters, which record data 24 hours and 7 days a week. As you can see, we have seen the ups and downs of traffic related to pandemic, as well as winter weather event. In 2022, we did 46 traffic count within North Hampton County, including 11 requested by Lower Mount Bethel Township, related to the River Point logistic development. Now I'll call Bright Hyde, who is going to talk about the side of transportation system.
Thank you, Patrick. We are excited to be in a partnership with our friends at the United Way of the Greater Lehigh Valley and the AARP to conduct a WALK audit program. Our event launch, April 25th, at Catasqua Park, was well-attended by our community transportation partners and elected officials, including both county executives. WALK audits gather valuable input from community members and galvanize support for improved pedestrian access by raising awareness in the community. The program will enable the public to play an important role in gathering information that will be used in the update of our transportation safety plan. As a starting point for the program, we have identified priority locations across the Lehigh Valley for the teams to audit. These include 23 locations within North Hampton County. The idea is for these audits to lead to real improvements and funding at some of the region's most dangerous and troublesome pedestrian corridors. Among our most popular programs is our in-person and virtual Local Technical Assistant Program, or LTAP, classes. In partnership with PennDOT, these classes help public work crews maintain and improve safety throughout our transportation network and within our communities. Class subjects range from temporary traffic control to erosion and sediment control, to even winter maintenance. Over the lifetime of the program, we have now trained 1,250 students from North Hampton County alone communities. This year, as part of the LTAP program, we also set a record with 44 specialized tech assists as requested by municipalities. A PennDOT engineer and an LVPC staffer meet in the field with municipal officials to guide discussions and give advice on a safer and more effective and efficient transportation network. Our most recent tech assist was in Penargel Borough at the site of a pedestrian fatality and serious injuries in the area of Weona Park, which is divided by State Route 512. Penargel now has a list of solutions and a way to pursue funding the recommended improvements. Now Commission Treasurer Kevin Schmidt is going to discuss some of our other education programs.
Thank you, Brian. To help manage this rapid period of growth, we continue to invest in educating the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. It's core to the LVPC and the LVTS mission. In 2022, we expanded our Lehigh Valley Government Academy, which included reinstituting in-person zoning, zoning administration, subdivision and land development, and community planning classes to train the next generation of community leaders so they can go back to their community to make more informed planning and zoning decisions. Becky, by the way, is one of the certified instructors. She is teaching a sold-out community planning class this month. We have scheduled another session this October due to overwhelming demand. Staff also conducted several transformative talks on topics like utility scale, solar, multi-municipal planning, and coordinated zoning, and continued our twice-a-year Lehigh Valley General Assembly, where we bring together all 62 municipalities with the U and state and federal leadership to share new data, best practices, and concerns. Now Hannah Malagio, Program Associate for Public Engagement, is going to discuss some of our community engagement efforts.
Thank you. Beyond educating our communities and helping them to manage development, we've also worked very hard at reaching as many people as possible, and we enlisted the help of our partners to do it. Our monthly radio show through WDII 88.1 FM helps gives, helps us give thousands of listeners an in-depth look at important planning issues. Our Sunday column in The Morning Call helps us reach 40,000 doorsteps and 70,000 devices, and our monthly development snapshot is given a half-page illustration in the Lehigh Valley Business Journal, which reaches 12,000 business-centric readers each month. In addition to in-house and online education, the LVPC staff provided keynote presentations, sat on expert panels, and helped organize events for dozens of community gatherings across the region in 2022. That included everything from sponsoring and staffing the two-day Eastern Pennsylvania Greenways and Trails Summit in Easton, to helping to coordinate the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Event in Allentown, to helping with the Bethlehem Community Health Needs Assessment, to a long list of projects and events too long to mention here tonight. I'm going to send it back over to Steve Neratko to discuss our website.
Thank you, Hannah. We invite everyone to stay connected to us. Our website opens the door to a wealth of community information from our meeting schedule to the latest data, plans, and analysis. Data LV is a major resource for our municipal and community partners, and will be updated throughout the year with population and employment projections, an equity analysis tool, and a long-range transportation planning tool, amongst other interesting data items. In terms of the LRTP, we have really upped our game this year and are using over 100 layers in our analysis from just a few dozen in years past. So much data that we broke the ARC GIS online system. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission also wants to hear from you. Anyone who'd like to stay connected with us can contact us on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, or Instagram, or they can just call the office or email us at planning@lvpc.org.
Protecting the environment has always been central to the mission of the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission since its inception in 1961, and the LVPC was recognized in Harrisburg last month as the $1 million recipient of U.S. Department of Environmental Protection funds to create a climate action plan that focuses on industrial decarbonization. Industrial electricity and natural gas are the largest carbon dioxide contributors in our region, 34.5%, as identified in the regional greenhouse gas inventory last year. We intend to coordinate this with the Infrastructure Investment and Job Act requirement for the Lehigh Valley Transportation Study for carbon reduction and protection. We're incredibly excited to be able to advance the goals, policies, and actions in future LV, the regional plan, which includes a strong and continued commitment to the environment and management of the realities of a robust industrial economy. We are also delighted to have the Commonwealth as a partner in the industrial decarbonization aspects, and we expect to discuss this and the many-day dovetailing partner initiatives over the next several years. We've already had several project, several projects in mind, not only to reduce carbon emissions, but to beautify the region's transportation network. This $1 million is really a down payment of more funding that we can compete for, and that's a pool of $4.6 billion available from U.S. EPA after March 2024. And finally, Commission Vice Chair Chris Amato is going to tie it all together for you.
Evening, everybody. I've been asked to read this portion of the presentation, Dr. Chris Amato. That probably seemed like a lot, but in reality, it just scratches the surface of what we were able to accomplish in 2022. You all know this because you were all part of it. I would be remiss if I didn't note that none of it would have been possible without your support and continued support, which will be important this year and beyond, as we update the $3.6 billion Long Range Transportation Plan, finalize two more multi-municipal comprehensive plans, continue developing climate action policies, and begin developing the housing supply and attainability strategy. The passion and commitment that all of you exhibit helps drive us to making sure the Lehigh Valley remains one of the nation's best places to raise a family or grow a business. Thank you.
Any questions for anybody? No questions? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. We'll have the county execs report soon as folks settle in or disperse. Whenever you're ready, Mr. McClure.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. How are you? May I have Ms. Anna Petke and her family come forward, please? Is it her coach? So we have another champion in our midst, and I think the best way for me to do this is just to read it. This is a proclamation. It has a number of whereas clauses, all of which I'm going to read because you have earned it. Whereas Anna Petke is a senior at Bethlehem Catholic High School. And whereas, on February 11th, 2023, Anna was crowned the Eastern Pennsylvania Conference Diving Champion at Parkland High School. She led in scoring for the entire six dive meet and ended with a total of 254.10. And whereas, on February 23rd, Anna won the District 11 Diving Championship in the Girls Double-A with a score of 219.85. And whereas, Anna won the gold medal at the 2023 PIAA Swim and Dive Championship Meet with a 242.5 points on March 15th, 2023, at Bucknell University. And whereas, the coaches, parents, and teammates were an integral part in guiding Anna to victory through their support. And whereas, these accomplishments bring honor and pride to our community. Now therefore do I, Lamont G. McClure, North Hampton County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of the county, honor, recognize, and congratulate Anna Petke for her achievements at the pool and wish her the best of luck. North Hampton County, Pennsylvania, May 4th, 2023. Congratulations. Congratulations. This is a proclamation. Come on, say something about you. Introduce yourself.
My name is Emily. I am the coach of Anna Petke for four years. I just am so proud of Anna's accomplishments in the pool. It is not easy for her as a Bethlehem Catholic Independent. She trained with us at Liberty High School for the past four years, and I have watched her grow since her freshman year on the board. Previously a gymnast, so some twisting and flipping talent there that we were able to translate into, obviously, some great success. So congratulations, Anna.
Thank you.
So with, with twisting and flipping talent, you might have a career in politics. But before, before you go away, we need to get a picture. Come on, get your parents in. Come on.
Come on, guys.
Everybody in here. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. Congratulations. Wonderful. Congratulations. All right, that was the fun stuff. Tomorrow, this email is going to be sent to all county employees. The federal government has announced plans to end the federal public health emergency for COVID-19 on May 11, 2023. Once these emergency declarations have expired, there will be a number of changes that will affect North Hampton County employees. As of May 12, 2023, the following county policies will be fully rescinded. 3.605T: Temporary mitigation measures COVID-19, requiring county employees to wear a mask and undergo temperature screenings before entering county buildings. 3.606T: New higher COVID vaccination policy requiring all newly hired employees to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 before beginning employment with the county. This policy does not apply to Greystale Nursing Home, which follows CMS guidelines and regulations. Please note, this change does not affect any department-specific policy as may be the case with Greystale Nursing Home, North Hampton County Department of Corrections, or other designated worksite. Those department-specific policies will remain in place. In addition, for employees on the county health plan, effective May 12, 2023, Capitol Blue Cross will implement the following coverage changes to the temporary Blue Cross will implement the following coverage changes to the temporary COVID-related relief services that were provided during the public health emergency. Vaccines received in-network will be provided with no cost to the member. Vaccines out-of-network may result in out-of-pocket costs. COVID-19 diagnostic tests and provider visits will be covered in accordance with the members' benefit plan, and any applicable member copay or cost share will apply. Over-the-counter COVID-19 tests through medical or pharmacy will no longer be covered. Oral antiviral and monoclonal antibody treatments for COVID-19 will need to be deemed medically necessary and meet specific coverage criteria. In the very near future, we will be announcing the cessation of the CMed E-RAP program in Northampton County. I believe this program helped us prevent a homelessness crisis in Northampton County during COVID. We invested $27 million in our CMed E-RAP program, $27 million in rental assistance and help with utility expenses, $27 million. There were 10,000 applications for our E-RAP CMed program throughout COVID. It is time, though, with the ending of the national emergency, to end the program in Northampton County, and we'll be having a further announcement about that in the very near future. I do believe, though, and it's worth repeating again, I believe we diverted a homelessness crisis, a disaster in Northampton County. Additionally, think of all the landlords that were benefited by this program, all the landlords and homeowners that were benefited by this program who weren't forced into bankruptcy because their tenants couldn't pay their rent. Additionally, when I saw the agenda, I think I saw it for the first time yesterday afternoon, I was disappointed to see that my proposed gift ban was not included on tonight's agenda for a first reading and introduction. Assistant County Solicitor Ricky Santini and I spent a great deal of time drafting this to make sure that it was as tight as possible because we want to make sure we're clear in Northampton County that we're banning gifts, right? We wanted to be very clear, and the proposed changes to the ordinance that we gave you did exactly that. So I was very disappointed because we need to do this. We need to speak with one voice, and we need to do it as soon as possible. So I wanted you to begin the process of taking up my gift ban tonight so that we could get it passed into law as soon as possible. But I was heartened to receive an email today from Mr. Spadoni indicating that he was reviewing the ordinance, and he has made, I believe, some changes, very few. I have them in front of me, struck out some whereas clauses, all of which I could live with, and by that I mean if it passes with those strikeouts, I will sign it. Maybe the removal of one subsection C, just the letter C, not the actual language. So the changes that I saw come through from Mr. Spadoni, which I thank him for working on, seem to be my gift ban. So if you even take those changes up and pass those in the next couple of weeks, I will sign them. And I think that concludes my report for tonight.
Is there any questions for the exec? Mr. Kusak?
For the benefit of our young government students, could you please explain what CMed E-RAP stands?
Sure. So I don't know what the words are for the acronyms, but what the E-RAP is was a national program money in the American Rescue Plan, which was funneled down through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which created the E-RAP program. And locally, to implement the programs that we have here at the county level, we created our CMed program. And through those programs, we were able to provide rental assistance to 10,000 applicants in the amount of $27 million through our COVID relief program. It's important for those students to know that this was always meant to be a temporary program, and it was meant to deal with the COVID emergency. And with the ending of the national COVID emergency, we thought it was an appropriate time to end the program.
We got that back there?
And let's see.
Those ladies over there can tell you exactly what E-RAP and CMed is if you want to get the exact.
That's all I have.
Recognize for doing very well with our program?
Yes, we were.
And you didn't mention that?
No, we were. We were. That will be part of the announcement when we make the announcement official next week, I believe.
Any other questions for the executive? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Old business. Is there any old business we need to discuss?
No.
If not, we will move on to new business. An introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the 2023 Northampton County Budget, Department of Community and Economic Development, EPA, Brownfields, Whole Home Repair Department, Fiscal Affairs, ARP, Local Assistance Department of Administration, Hazers, Migration. Can I have someone sponsor and co-sponsor?
I would like to sponsor.
Can I have a co? Mr. Giovanni would give it a second. We will have a public hearing on May 18th about that particular ordinance. Moving on, introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by Northampton County Council, authorized the county of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, lease property located, identified as parcel K311150156, located Cherryville Road, Lehigh Township, Northampton County. Can I have a sponsor?
I'll sponsor. I'll co.
You have that? We will have a public hearing on that on May 18th also. Consideration of authorization to file a redevelopment assistant capital program, RCAT, RAP, whatever it is, grant application business plan for Hangdog Lehigh Valley Resolution. Ms. Zirinsky, please introduce the resolution.
Whereas, upon award of the grant funds in the amount of $350,000 to the county for the project and execution of the grant agreement, the county shall enter into a cooperation/ sub-grant agreement. The sub-grant agreement with Hangdog Lehigh Valley LLC and disburse such grant funds to Hangdog Lehigh Valley LLC pursuant thereto. And whereas, the RACP grant, if and when issued, shall not be deemed an obligation of the county or of any political subdivision thereof to provide any funds to Hangdog LV LLC for the project, the sole obligation of the county being the dispersal of funds for the RACP grant to Hangdog LV LLC pursuant to the grant agreement and sub-grant agreement now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council as follows. The county supports the grant to Hangdog LV LLC in the amount of $350,000 to be used for the Hangdog project. The county agrees to serve as the public applicant for the grant. The county authorizes the county executive to execute the grant agreement on behalf of Hangdog LV LLC and to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate receipt of the grant for the project. So we did speak about this at our Economic Development Committee meeting. Thank you.
Any discretion on this? It was quite informative, and I had a chance to look at its little website. It was very impressive. I will definitely be voting for this. Okay, let's call for a vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo? Oh, I'm sorry. He's not here. Mr. Heckman?
Ron?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Nice.
Do we have any other new business that we need to talk about? If not, council committee reports. Ms. Zirinsky?
Thank you. We had an Economic Development Committee meeting today, and obviously Hangdog was part of that. He gave an excellent presentation on this rope-climbing facility and entertainment center. Taking entertainment to new heights is what he said, and I thought that was really great. It's in Williams Township, and I think a lot of us are really excited, creating 40 jobs, working cooperatively with other entrepreneurs in Northampton County. It's a really awesome project. I'm glad we passed it tonight. The other one was a presentation from Northampton County Housing Authority, and I thought Gwen Didden did an excellent job. We have three facilities that we're working with, Oliversey Border House, the one on Gep Street, that's the PHFA funds, and then also the Howard Jones Project. We obviously have come so far with our housing authority now from having those funds being diverted to Lehigh County, and I'm so proud of the work that Gwen Didden has done to bring up all of the buildings and the maintenance and the staff, and I feel like she's done a huge volume of work in a very short period of time. So our housing authority is in good hands.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
I have one more thing. Mr. McClure had talked about wanting to see this article that was in the Naco County News. It's California Counties Help Youth Leaving Foster Care Find Housing With HUD Vouchers. HUD vouchers were part of what we were talking about in terms of housing, and this is a project that was started to help foster children who are leaving their foster care and have that transitional housing that is helping them pay for it, obviously with HUD vouchers, giving them sort of like a nice bridge to their own independence. So I'll give that to you when we're done. Thank you.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Human Services had a committee meeting prior to this meeting this evening. Kristy Cole from Health Choices gave an extensive overview of that program and discussed how they will be reviewing the numbers this year and how many people were escalated, served under COVID, and that have to be reviewed. It's pretty astounding how many lives are touched by this program. Also was reported that the civil service program is on the brink of being complete and that we should have news about that soon, as well as the ORLTSR PQZ program should be at a ribbon-cutting at the end of this month, and so we could finally get that program started. There was also a report on Greysdale, as well as the Greysdale study. We were told today that the first point of contact was a phone call and that they're getting documentation together for review, and there will be a site visit conducted this month by at least eight to 12 people from affinity. So I hope to hear about that in the future.
No other reports? Just to add on to what Ms. Zirinsky added earlier about our housing, I'm happy to see that when we took it over, there's people that took it over, cleaned it up, and it sounds magnificent, all the work that they plan on doing. Most of all, you know, you said where they were, we need to let everybody know that there was this one in Nazareth, Bethlehem, and Bath. So that's where they're located at, and she left us with a great impression that we're moving in the right direction. So congratulations on that move. Lehigh's own reports? None? Oh, Mr. Kusak?
A brief one. IDA met last month, and the action items were an extension of the Rising Tide Loan Fund and an adjustment to the Moravian University Housing Project.
Clerk's report?
Nothing.
Solicitor's report?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Matt.
Everybody have a nice weekend.
We are out of here.
Hey, Linda.
Why? Why? That's awesome. I don't know.